The convenient work session, we're going to see the commission order for Wednesday, October 2nd, 2019, time is about 7:45 PM. Call roll please.
Commissioner Rachel Lyles Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Frank O'Donnell.
Here.
Commissioner Rocky Smith.
Here.
Mayor Dan Holliday.
Here.
And Denise McGriff is absent this evening.
Okay, so, under discussion items, we have PC 19-099, Development Code Amendments, including equitable housing, planning file LEG 18-0001, height limits within the mixed-use downtown district, Ms. Turway.
Thank you very much, Pete Walter, Senior Planner with the city.
Hi, good evening, everybody. Staff's recommendation with respect to the mixed-use downtown height discussion right now is to support the planning commission's initial recommendation to remove the 45-foot height limit for buildings with respect to homes within 1,000 feet, and here's why. I'm going to go into brief detail on this. So this is a map that indicates what the current code regulates with respect to heights, and under the proposed code, there would be some parcels that would be positively affected or would be allowed to have a slightly higher building height. I did put a lot of maps together in your packet, but I'm not going to show you all of those. The maps that we put in the packet were a combination of height maps based on the street grade and then absolute height of buildings based on sea level, so you could kind of see the difference in a hypothetical way. My attempt to summarize what those maps say is here. So, within our downtown design district where the height limit is 58 feet, it's not in the floodplain, and the building heights there could vary as much as around 18 feet due to changes in grade at the street level. Absolute building height could average around 124 feet above sea level there. Once you move north of there and you're, from that point to the end of the Oregon Trail Center, you're, you've got floodplain requirements that affect certain parcels and not in others. So, building heights could vary as much as 50 feet because you measure the height in the floodplain from the base flood elevation. The absolute building height in that area could vary from 143 feet to 91 feet above sea level if they were fully built out under the proposed code. And with the exception of those blocks between Main Street and Washington Street and along 99E where they'd be probably about 20 feet lower because of that height limitation. And then, if you go even further north towards landfill and the Cove where the parcels are larger and much, there's a lot of undeveloped or redevelopable land there, you've got the floodplain in place, you have fewer single-family residences there, so the 45-foot height limit has a limited effect, but it does sort of have a more consistent height limit in that area where your heights could be approximately 176 feet above sea level. So, you're getting more of the 75-foot height limit in that area. So, that's just based on a mathematical addition of the height to where we measure it from, and that's what I was intending to show. But, for various reasons, we're recommending that we go, that you adopt the planning commission recommendation for right now. A reason for this is...
Roll back.
Sorry, I don't know, refer back to that. So, the one addition in that code would be instead of height limit being limited to 45 feet, within 100 feet of single-family detached units, it would be abutting those units, so it doesn't have quite the effect. And that's the only change that the planning commission recommended, and that's what we're recommending you support for now. The reasons behind this are several. We're entering into a comprehensive plan update process that will include analysis of economic opportunities as well as building off of the housing needs analysis, which has just been published for Clackamas County and for the city. We're going to be presenting that to you later on, and we'll be providing more detail on that. So, all of these reasons, including vertical housing, adequacy of public facilities, it really needs further input from the public and from the business community, and I think the comprehensive plan process is the best vehicle for that.
So, we were originally leading you guys down this road recommending that we look at all of the height limits in mixed-use downtown and more comprehensively, and now this is a change of tide where it's a recommendation of staff to just implement the planning commission recommendation, just change it so buildings within 100 feet of existing single-family homes previously or currently are limited to 45 feet. So, if that's just abutting, changes to 45 feet, and then we'll keep analyzing all these other factors that are coming in with that. All of these other analyses that are happening with the comprehensive plan, which could identify future projects to continue to look at how our regional center develops, and we'll have more information about housing and housing needs, we'll have more information about economic and economic needs, and then we can do a more holistic view of how that applies. Also, there's other external factors going on, like regional conversations about mobility and things like that. So, at this point, the recommendation is to sort of just keep it simple. If we want to amend the mixed-use downtown district, just sort of tweak the end, and then we'll do a more deeper holistic conversation when we have more data instead of rather than just guessing at heights and trying to figure out what the impact of that would be on either infrastructure or things like that, the economy.
Can you roll back on the map for me?
And can you flip back and forth so they can see the difference?
So, current code, and I can do this as many times as you like.
Where are they looking?
Yeah, so...
This is current code, right?
This is current. You'll notice...
The next point is...
So, pink is shorter.
Right. I can't see your pointer, Pete.
Yes, you have to turn around.
So, it is.
Now you can point, if they're turning.
Okay, I'm going to point to the, sorry. Watch, watch this spot. So, that has a, that parcel is affected, and that one...
These are the changes if you just remove the thing that says...
Several of those, right?
Yeah.
So, current, proposed. Current, proposed.
My only question is, why, why keep with the 45-foot next to my law firm boulevard?
The planning commission reasons for that were predominantly with respect to having a scaled-down building toward, as you move towards the Willamette River. Not just from a view perspective, but also from a scale perspective when you're at the street level.
All right, I'm okay with that if we're going to be looking at this again in light of the comprehensive plan.
We're going to be looking at it again. I struggle understanding it because, you know, when is 100-foot, the impact of 100-foot building only 70 feet, or when is a 75-foot building impact only 58 feet because of baseline? So, part of it is like, and you referenced sea level, you know, so that's fine, but then I thought, well, maybe we should extend an imaginary baseline from some point and say, this is, we're going to do everything above that.
But remember, sea level is going to rise, so...
I just like imagining baseline might be, you know, somewhere from whatever, third and main or something.
I just, I thought we decided to simplify it, and I thought we agreed on like a 60-foot height.
Yeah, you guys had asked for information regarding, yeah, relative heights since it's measured from the floodplain, so Pete has in the record a bunch of maps that get at what it would be. Turns out answering that question is relatively complicated.
It's highly variable. I do have those maps up, if you wanted to see one of those, we could look at it.
The closer that we get into the comprehensive plan, the more it's apparent that there's all of this data that may be helpful for you in making these decisions. So, why would you want to make the buildings taller? How does that affect our regional center, businesses, housing opportunities? So, there's, that's part of the bigger push to sort of suggest an alternate method, but yeah, you guys had suggested essentially keeping the 58 feet and rolling the 50 feet out closer towards the end of Oregon Trail and kind of going up from there.
Yeah, I'm good with, you know, the addition of some of these properties in, you know, in the north end of downtown, and the rest of it, we can look at in the comp plan.
True. It seemed that the commission had agreeance of not limiting the height within 100 feet of residential, so that's where, again, the staff support for that recommendation came from.
So, is anybody vehemently opposed to just taking this now and then moving on to, when we get to the comp plan? I think you have your direction.
Thank you very much.
With that, I'm going to take my leave, and Mr. O'Donnell will take over the meeting.
All right, take care of yourself.
You can have that. So, we're moving on to item 2B. That item is PC 19098, which are development code amendments, including equitable housing, referencing a planning file LEG 18-0001, and general amendments for clarification, correction of errors or improvements presented by Ms. Turway or her designee.
I need a longer name on these, right?
Yeah.
Thank you very much. I am pleased to announce that this is the last tentative work session on any of these code amendments, so, you know, we did the big batch, and then we had a couple issues we wanted to look at a little bit more. This is the last of those couple issues we want to look at a little bit more. This is just the catch-all, did we make any mistakes, or did we see any opportunities for improvements in our code? So, Pete will walk you through this batch, but this has all been before the planning commission, and the overarching goal is to then package up all of these code amendments and come back to you on the 16th, not asking for a decision, but we can just work through any changes you want to suggest at that time. With that, Pete Walter.
Hi, I'm going to keep this fairly high level unless you want to do any more detailed discussion, which I do have, but I'll try to summarize as much as possible. So, the code became effective August 2nd. We've been working with it already, and individual planners and the public have helped us identify some of these things. We wanted to move this forward quickly so that we can clean these items up and have a functional code and not have any ambiguity. Planning commission reviewed and recommended approval of these on September 9th and the So, some of the clarifications that we're making, I've categorized these, but with respect to calculations, lot size reduction in particular, we've got a rounding definition in there so that if you end up with a fraction as a result of your lot size reduction calculation, it rounds down, not up, we just made that very clear. Similarly, for minimum and maximum net density calculations, we've got rounding in there so that we have a consistent rounding for that. Another definition is that a bus stop, an individual bus stop is not a passenger terminal because that would require a conditional use permit. And with respect to a process, we have application completeness review begins when you submit a land use application form and pay all required fees. That's one of the clarifications that we're making. Some of the standards that we're clarifying, in the institutional zone, a cross-reference to 15% minimum landscaping requirement, clarifying that easements are not, projections into easements are not permitted, so that's not something that was previously specified. We've clarified fence height measurements on retaining walls as a result of some recent variance applications.
I just want to highlight this one a little bit. This is allowing taller fence heights if they're subgrade right away.
Subgrade, yeah.
So, if you're in front, if it's in front of your building now, three and a half feet is the fence height maximum, but what if it's subgrade? So, can you have a taller retaining wall subgrade? And so, this allows, I think, up to six-foot retaining wall.
Yeah.
Subgrade.
For home occupations, our definition does not allow for commodities to be sold, so that's been restated and clarified in our supplemental zoning code. Calculations of minimum parking in employment zones, and by that, we're talking about the mixed-use employment zone, like the Red Soils Campus, Campus Industrial Zone, and the area like the hospital, and areas that would have fleet parking, so FedEx, for example, clarifying that that fleet parking can be counted without going over your maximum parking requirement in the code. It's not contributing to the normal day-to-day customer parking requirements because of your storing vehicles there that are used with those employment uses. Now, landscaping for drive-aisles and parking lots, we have a buffer landscaping requirement for parking spaces between a parking space and a building wall, but we wanted to clarify that we don't necessarily need landscaping between a drive aisle that's next to a building and the building wall, so that allows more efficient use of the area and that sort of thing. Still have minimum landscaping requirements for the interior of parking lots, for the perimeter of parking lots, and building buffer landscaping, in addition to all the other landscaping requirements on site. For rooftop mechanical equipment, we want to make the clarification that we're only going to require visual screening of mechanical equipment when it's viewable from the street on a new building. If you're adding new equipment or replacing new rooftop mechanical equipment on an existing building, we're not going to require screening on that, but we would require it be painted or powder-coated to not be shiny metal. And this has come up again and again and again, and very difficult to administer with limited effect. It would not affect historic review areas, you know, screening would still be necessary for, through the guidelines for construction and historic areas and those sorts of things, but we feel that this is a suitable amendment to be making. With respect to chain link fencing, we generally prohibited it in our site plan and design review standards, but we want to be able to allow it coated, vinyl-coated or powder-coated chain link fencing for city-owned parks and recreation facilities, ball fields and that sort of thing. It wouldn't just be city-owned facilities, it could apply to school district facilities as well, so. The issue of tree preservation, I wanted to clarify that the city engineer has the authority to modify street improvement standards and other public requirements in order to allow for preservation of significant and established trees if necessary. That's just clarifying that. With respect to manufactured home parks, we have recommended that the setbacks for manufactured home parks for both the units and any accessory structures within the manufactured home park match what the statewide setbacks are, the minimum requirements there. So, you would generally have a six-foot separation requirement for any units within the park, a 15-foot setback around the perimeter of the park, and accessory structures would basically follow whatever statewide standards were there. We also would require that common areas, such as common parking lots, recreation rooms, outdoor lighting systems, fences and structures that are generally common, would need site plan and design review. But the whole intent of this is to simplify and make it more flexible for people to relocate or replace units within a manufactured home park.
So, this is one of the bigger changes of the bunch.
That's one of the bigger ones.
Is tweaking some of the standards as they relate to manufactured home parks. He'll talk about another one later, too, but changing the distance between buildings and setbacks, there's still the 15-foot around the perimeter, but this is more, one of the more substantial one as it relates directly to equitable housing.
Want to talk about that a little bit more. So, we also wanted to clarify, if you place a manufactured dwelling on an individual lot, not in a park, or it's a site-built, normally where you would have to build a site-built home or on a lot of records somewhere else, our single-family design standards would apply in those cases, but those single-family design standards do not apply within a manufactured home park. And there's multiple reasons for that. Manufactured homes have very clear specifications for what you can and cannot attach to them and that sort of thing, but it's also an equitable housing requirement, so.
So, Pete, can you go back?
Yeah.
Are you sure that there are manufactured homes that can comply with our single-family design standards? Have you done that cross-check?
When that comes up, there's usually a minimum number of things that need to meet. Main entrances have to face the street, or at least a porch can be side-oriented, so you know where the entrance is. Sometimes they may have trouble meeting the window requirement on the side, but they can generally do that, too. There's a range of options, there's like 22 options in the code, and I think they generally have to meet five of them, maybe seven in some cases, but things like window trim, four-inch window trim, a gable or hept roof, having decorative tile or stone, they can oftentimes meet that with minimal expense. Either they come that way designed already, so I don't see an issue of meeting those.
We've been requiring, so we review manufactured home parks in the manufactured home parks all the time, so they'll switch out the homes, and so they have been complying with the design standards for years. It's just requires some modification.
Yeah. I mean, don't we already have a substantial number of prefab or manufactured homes in the city, like in Tower Vista?
Yeah.
I know that whole area was assembled out of prefabs.
Yeah, there's several, Char Diaz Estates is a manufactured home, but it has garages that are added, and they're all in large, large spaces, so.
Did they not, at the time, comply with single-family design standards?
I think predated them.
Predated, yeah.
We created them, I think, in 2004, somewhere, I believe 2004. The nuance here is that if you have a manufactured home on its own lot, not in a manufactured home park, it does have to comply with the same design standards that the stick-built one does next door.
Yeah, makes sense.
Yeah.
Okay. With respect to the Willamette River Greenway, Kelly Reed is going to be talking to, about this with the Natural Resources Committee next week. Anyway, we're writing in, this is a very old section of code, and the whole intent of the code is that new development is compatible with the Willamette River Greenway. Wanted to clarify some existing processes and policies and make sure that there are specific exemptions written in for very small impacts, and the types of things we're talking about are things that already get a compatibility review in another part of the code, like type-one reviews for site plans on houses, anything that goes through a historic review board review or action, and they have their own set of guidelines and policies for HRB review. So, if you're in Kanema and you're also within the Willamette River Greenway District, you're going to be reviewed for compatibility, signs and those sorts of things. So, go ahead.
So, Willamette River Greenway is an overlay district, and basically the premise of it is that things look nice from the river. You're not creating a lot of obstruction, visual obstructions or things like that. So, what's that?
Pollution.
Pollution. So, this exemption section is new. We're adding to the exemptions that say if you do minor changes to the exterior building, if you add a window or something like that, it's not really going to change the view from all the way down on the river. And if you do things that are allowed outright through historic review board policies, those are such small-scale things that, again, they won't drastically change the view down from the river. Same thing with sign. If you post a sign on, near Oregon City Shopping Center, something like that, or at McDonald's, they were in the Willamette River Greenway corner, so if McDonald's wants to place a sign on their property, that's not going to drastically change the view from when you're on a boat on the river. And then also, the conflicting procedures that we just had in the 1740 where there's, it references administrative in 1750, and then it also has administrative process, I think that same language got copied into Willamette River Greenway at some point, and so we also have the same problem here, so we're clarifying that conflicting provision. And then also, in the Willamette River Greenway, there's a standard that limits the height of residential structures at 35 feet. We think that that was predated a lot of our historic overlay reviews. So, Willamette River Greenway came on board before Historic Review Board and Kanema's District and most of, all of Kanema's essentially in Willamette River Greenway, and so it was a provision to limit height at the time. Now, we see it as a barrier for housing in particular as it relates to downtown, say like around the courthouse or things like that, mixed-use. If you limit the height to 35 feet for residential structures, how does that play these days when mixed-use is a thing now?
And with respect, with respect to the mixed-use zones, if there is a mixed-use residential and commercial building proposed in either the neighborhood commercial or the mixed-use downtown or the mixed-use corridor, we wanted to clarify that there must be at least 50% of that building in square footage used for commercial space. This would not apply to live works developments or the straight multifamily developments. It would only apply to buildings that are mixed-use, and the reason for that is to assure that there is a commercial... Is to assure that there is a commercial component associated with that zone, which is the intent of that zone. It doesn't preclude doing multifamily apartments, as I mentioned, and combinations of mixed-use structures that are, you know, detached or attached in the same parcel and that sort of thing. In those zones, we're clarifying that parks are a conditional use in the mixed-use downtown, and that bus stops are not a conditional use. They are not passenger terminals. The parks, inadvert, the parks' conditional use issue was due to copying one section of code over from another because it had to do with references to the mixed-use corridor. So, any park or community center type use would have to go through conditional use permit. So, that's all we had for a summary. Our next steps are talking to the CIC on the 7th, the Natural Resources Committee on the 9th, and coming back before you on the 16th, and that's as far out as we're planning. I'm not sure when we will have a first or second reading, but that'll be based off of the meeting on the 16th. Thank you.
So, I take it all this was informational, so now you don't need any action from the commission?
If there's a standard that you'd like us to change, let us know because we'll come back to you with that whole package of code amendments.
Right.
But again, then you'll have a hearing to talk about it a little more as well, so we're not asking for a decision on the 16th.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
That being done, says City Managers Report with Danny.
Thank you, sir. Start with Mr. Lewis with an update concerning PrAC. So, Commissioner Lyles Smith had asked about some teen involvement with the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee, and so I just have Mr. Lewis give an update on what transpired.
Thank you very much, Mr. Manager. So, in June of this year, PrAC updated their bylaws and was approved by the city commission to change the bylaws and include a teen representative position. They would sit on PrAC as a non-voting member, but would serve to provide a teen perspective as we're developing our parks and recreation facilities and providing services for our community members. It would be a one-year term, and the representative would need to be 18 years or younger at the time, start time of the term that they were serving. And so, as we went through and discussed our updating our bylaws, this was something that was really strongly supported by members of PrAC. that was, uh, really strongly supported by members of PrAC and, uh, they're excited to move forward and hopefully secure a teen representative to be able to provide input and feedback as we discuss parks and recreation in our community. Uh, so, we would highly recommend any, uh, members of the community that are interested, uh, in eighteen or under to apply, or anyone who has a family member or friend who is eighteen and under and thinks would be a good, uh, a good addition to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee to apply, um, on our website.
Very good, thank you.
Two-year-olds, three-year, nine-year-old kid.
Hey, they have to interview.
So, are you doing, um, if I can follow up with questions, um, so are you doing any outreach, like to the high school or anything like that, or is it just by word of mouth?
Yeah, so, uh, working with the, um, uh, Communications Coordinator, we've done several postings for, uh, through her channels. Additionally, have reached out to the school, uh, playing a little bit of phone tag with the counseling department, but, uh, we're hoping to start getting information out through the high school as well.
Yeah, the question, the questions that I posed to, uh, Tony were, I, I saw it advertised on the website and my question was, you know, are all of the committees doing this? Is just this, is just, just PrAC? Has the commission, you know, thought about having, there are, there are a variety of commissions in our area that are having youth councils and, uh, youth programs to get them involved in civic engagement. I know the city of Estacada is trying to stand up a youth program right now, um, and, uh, there's a couple of cities that I've, I've seen online that have programs. So, it, it was kind of a surprise to me, uh, when I saw it online, I didn't know if it was kind of a, a one-off or, you know, ad hoc, they, they decided to take initiative versus maybe a, a city program that I wasn't aware of. But I do think it's something for the commission to consider of how we engage our youth and, um, it's definitely, I, I know there are some commissions, I believe, like the city of Hillsborough, I believe, it's either Hillsborough or Beaverton, but I believe it's Hillsborough, has a very, um, robust youth, um, program, uh, where at, at least one point during the year, the set of youth, they actually come and sit next to the commissioners, um, and they can see what it's like to participate from the dais and, um, so anyway, so I, I think there's a variety of, probably a variety of versions of how it could be implemented. So, um, anyway, it just sparked my interest and I, so I sent the email to Tony, I'm like, I don't know anything about this and is this ad hoc or is it organized and, um, something for us to consider.
So, it's, uh, the PrAC is the only, uh, committee doing it. I can't remember if Commissioner Smith, I know the Commissioner Iden was on, I think we talked about it at a retreat.
I remember talking about it a long time ago, um, and I know the school district, I think they still have a student rep, they always did in the past, um, so, I mean, it's definitely something that I've considered in the past, it'd be great. Uh, and I know there's a ton of students, well, clearly from the involvement with the Girl Scouts in the park program with, uh, Latterett Park and other things. I actually have spoke in the last two years to the government classes at the high school just about city government and, um, so I know there's a lot of interest at the school getting involved in some way.
Well, and we've received emails in the last two weeks from students, um, from at least one student, from a teacher at Ogden Middle School, um, about students, you know, engaging in community projects and wanting to know if, if we would answer questions and engage with students at the, so I, I think there's a desire there, um, and so I, I was intrigued, but it was, it's like, oh, look in there, we're, we're doing something about that and I didn't even know about it. So, um, I don't know, there's something for us to think about. And I don't know, I guess it sounds like maybe you'd get positive encouragement from this commission, I don't know if anybody on your staff has expressed an interest of, you know, thinking about it, of what that might look like or looking at neighboring cities, but I don't know. I mean, I know you're busy.
We'll keep it, we'll keep it on the radar, yes. No, it's a great topic and I remember we, I think we had a lot, I, I know I've had discussions with Happy Valley, another community that has a very good and strong, uh, youth program, go out to D C, I believe, every year, uh, with, uh, City Manager, staff and I think Commissioner, too. So, there's some great examples out there if we have the ability to.
Even, even, yeah, even baby steps, maybe it's that we encourage, you know, all of our advisory committees to have, uh, a youth representative and then see how that goes or, I mean, if they're volunteering and, and to participate, it, it wouldn't be a huge impact, um, I don't think so.
Yep, great.
To consider.
Next update, um, so, many of you recall, we've been working on, um, um, our, our charter parks and taking parks and getting them designated as charter parks. Some of them were very, very simple, they were newer, some of them were really more complicated. So, uh, just want to let you know, um, we've been in con- we've sent out mailers to, um, the residents along the McGoughlin Promenade, um, then we are gonna start survey work, uh, this Friday, um, uh, delineating the boundaries, surveying the boundaries, putting in, especially, you know, where we know our rights of way. So, the, the neighbors have, have been informed, uh, we have, uh, in that, in that, um, notice that we sent out to them, uh, we are, we've scheduled a meeting for October twenty-ninth here at City Hall at seven P M.
Six P M.
Six P M, sorry. Just 'cause I'm sure people are gonna have questions, what, you know, when you start seeing survey posts and sticks out and, out in, out in, out along the promenade. And really, our message right now is, we're just, we're delineating the boundaries. I, I have a feeling there's gonna be some encroachments. We haven't made any decisions concerning how we're gonna move forward, this is really informational so that we can get an idea of, of where the property is on that. So, in case you start to hear any questions or you start to see survey work along the promenade, um, that is, that is beginning on the fourth. And then last, um, just, uh, just a heads up, Homecoming Parade this Friday, October fourth, four forty-five to six forty-five, uh, from the, uh, heading up, uh, heading up Lynn Avenue, so.
Down.
Down, sorry, sorry, we're kinda excited. So, becoming, uh, Lynn Avenue will be busy, uh, closed, four forty-five, six forty-five, Friday. That is all I have for tonight.
Doesn't call for it, but do, and my folks, Commissioner, is there anything they want to share?
Uh, I would like to thank Oregon City Police Department.
Yeah.
Uh, for their work on catching the nail bandit. What are we calling them, nighttime nailers?
Hammered the nighttime nailer.
Yeah.
Or nailed the night.
Do you have anything you want to share on that? Um, I, I, I've seen some articles out of Portland, um, where the sus- the suspect mentioned that he did this across the metropolitan area and I think that, um, I, I saw some other articles, um, very quickly about that, like putting the two and two together and, and, um, and I also have seen a lot of public comment, I think, I think there's a lot of people interested in this topic and, um, yeah, I, I, I don't know what else there is for us to do other than thank the O C police for its being diligent, 'cause I know it was very difficult to catch someone, you know, you know, narrowing it down and figuring out when, you know, they were doing it in, in the dark, which could be hours on hours and you can't cover every street, so, um.
It, we've gotten a ton of emails from people in, in other jurisdictions, too, I mean, a lot of them, people are very happy about this. It's the graveyard, every article, every time this would come out, they took it, just, it would, they were so mad and they wanted to get this guy so bad. And, uh, and I would have people call, uh, the mayor a lot, uh, what are you guys doing? And, and there were a lot of things that were being done and a lot of times that they were watching, waiting, doing a bunch of things and nothing, nothing, nothing. I mean, it's been a couple of years and, uh, so finally it paid off and they were super excited, like kids, they were excited, so. I was really happy for them and for everybody involved. It, it's just kind of an interesting thing about how, it's not the most serious crime that exists, but, you know, for anybody who's just driving to work and you get a flat tire, you can't go to work, you have to go to Schwab, get it fixed, you're really put out and you feel, you can really tell that people felt, you know, victimized, uh, and a lot of them, so we're, we're pretty happy.
I mean, there were people who had to get new tires, multiple times, multiple sets of tires, Katie was one, but, you know, I mean, not only was it an impact potentially financially, but you miss work, I mean, if, if it happens to you on the way to work, I mean, it, yeah, I mean, it, there was an impact, a pretty significant impact to our residents, so, um, lots of overjoyed people, we were very, very appreciative, um.
Yeah, well, I'll, I'll pass it along, that, um, they're pretty happy, so, that's good, thank you.
Pizza party, cake or something.
Should be a celebration.
Yes.
All right, with all that being done, I have adjourned this meeting, thanks everyone.